If there's no movie, I don't think so.
What do you got?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the February 16th meeting, City Council meeting, for the City of Cannon Falls to order. Go ahead, roll call, please. Bringle.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Gesmi.
Here.
Cronenberger.
Here.
Lundell.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Altough.
Here.
To rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Lundell and a second by Duncan. Approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, presentation tonight. The 2020 Economic Development Authority Annual Report. We'll turn it over to Laura.
Good evening. It'll just take me a second to get this fired up, I think. Maybe? There we go. Tic-tac? I think my computer's done working for the day. Here it comes. Okay, so this is a 2020 EDA Annual Report, so it probably looks different than maybe what you've ever seen in the past. I am a firm believer in graphics and presentations, so hopefully you'll learn something new about what we did last year. I did present this to our EDA Board a couple of weeks ago, and then I did present a portion of it to the Chamber of Commerce earlier this morning. And so for those of you that maybe were on the Chamber of Commerce meeting and just called in and didn't get to see the slideshow, today it's your lucky day. So with that, again, this is going to recap anything, any activity January through December 31st. So our EDA Board of Commissioners was Luke Corman, was our President and Chair, Amy Dombeck, Vice President, John Altough, Treasurer and Mayor, Morris Matson was our City Council Liaison, Roxanne Flotten was one of our members, Neil Jensen, our City Administrator, and myself. Whoops. So the background of the EDA is created November 3rd of 2005, and it operates under the authority of the City Council as a chief economic development agency for the city. Our goal is to improve the economic condition of Cannon Falls through appropriate commercial and industrial development, thus creating a higher tax base and quality employment opportunities. So the mission is to promote and coordinate and develop the expansion of those special areas of economic activity, but not just limited to industry, commerce, housing, and tourism, and also maintaining a high quality of life for the Cannon Falls area residents. So we had some grants that we received during the year. One was from Smith, the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, for $5,000, and that was a Small Towns Crisis Grant. They changed one of their grants that they usually give out during the year to try to help small towns respond and help drive some economic activity due to COVID-19. So we were recipients of a $5,000 award, and we used that, we partnered that with some Blandon dollars, and we did that to drive some traffic to our Cannon Roots branding. Explore Minnesota, we partnered with the Chamber of Commerce as it had to have been applied for through a tourist bureau. So we got $1,000, and we've got an ad coming out this spring. Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, we did receive, or we were awarded, a grant for a local trails connection for the Hannah's Bend Park that will connect the Millstown State Trail and the city's trail system. However, we did turn that one down and were reapplying for a regional trails grant after we had the budget reevaluated and the terms of the project modified. Minnesota Historical and Cultural Heritage Grant Program, that was a $2.2 million grant for the Third Street Bridge Rehab Project that will be happening this year. Department of Ag, and that was also through Renewing the Countryside as the fiscal agent on that, and that was a $2,000 grant for the Farmers Market Food Aggregation Program. There was also the USDA, we received $1,000 for a Farm to School Program, and then Compuier Financial, another $1,000 for Artisan Plaza Farmers Market for marketing, and also for the Farm to School Program. Mail Clinic Health System, there was a $1,000 grant for implementation of the Power of Produce, and then there was a private land donation by Pat Green from Rob Ester. She had some property along the river that we needed to acquire for the Third Street Bridge Project. As far as business activity goes, there were five significant commercial and industrial projects that were permitted in 2020. Total valuation was a $2.15 million for new construction. And Cannon Bell's Cheese broke ground on their new production facility, and they got it, the grading done and the stakes up, but weren't able to get the cement slab poured before the snow came in October, so that will pick up again once the snow, or the ground thaws. Carsonson Trucking built a 15,000-square-foot facility in the industrial park, valued at $895,000. The former Napa Building that would be behind First Farmers and Merchants Bank downtown, that was remodeled into ABC Preschool and Early Learning Center, which was a nice addition to our community. The former Cannonball Truck Stop, that was demoed back in July of 2020, and that was actually a partnership with the Economic Initiative and the EDA to help take that property down for redevelopment. So the total project cost was $185,000, and then we do have that listed for $250,000, and we've seen quite a bit of activity and interest in that property, just waiting to sign, get someone to sign on the dotted line on that. And then Banks Outdoors, they have an expansion for a 30,000-square-foot addition to their existing facility over on the west side of 52, and that's valued at $1.1 million. As far as business subsidies that were utilized, we have seven loans out from our revolving loan fund, so it's Anytime Fitness, they own the property in between Caldwell Banker and the Beacon. Currently, there isn't a building there, but he owns that property. Interstate Building Supply, and Aqualand, which is open. Rob Ester, Keith Myers, to rehab the old Schofield Jug Building into his new office. Italian Brewing Company, from when they needed to purchase equipment to open, and then Art Org has an outstanding loan as well. So total principal outstanding is $403,000, and all of them are current and paying. Our EDA site inventory, so the EDA does own a few different properties in the Cannon Falls area, and with that, I'll just walk you through a couple of them. So this is an overview of our industrial park. So if you can see, this bottom one right here is where the Cannon Bells are building, so that was an EDA-owned property. We've got this one right here. The sale is pending on that. We've got a business that will be expanding and building their own facility, that'll be a 17,500-square-foot structure that will be going there, and that will hopefully break around this year. We have this 2.9-acre parcel. We have a 4.3 in between Sweet Harvest, and then this would be Lawrence Meats. And then this would be the old Lee Chevrolet Building downtown on Mill Street, and that's about half an acre, right now currently used for parking. And then this would be the former Cannonball site, so that's about, it's technically 3.25 acres, so I don't know why it says three on there, I can't control the GIS. So anyway, so those are the properties that we currently own with the EDA. So COVID-19 obviously threw a wrench in a whole bunch of businesses' plans and projections for the year, but I was part of the team that worked on the Goodhue County COVID Relief Business and Nonprofit Grants that went out. So the county was issued $2.2 million to distribute to businesses and nonprofits that were affected or could show that they had some type of impact, there was some impact to their business from COVID-19. So Cannon Falls actually received 27% of that total amount, which was the greatest share, and 59 businesses or nonprofits received those monies totaling $588,000. So that was pretty exciting to have over a half a million dollars put back into our businesses in the community. And one little highlight, just kind of jumping into this year a little bit, the most recent business relief payments that came from the state that were, they were either direct payments to bars, restaurants, venues, or it was distributed to the county, and Cannon Falls had 25 businesses from that most current relief grant program totaling $242,500. So that was just distributed within the last month. So again, it's nice to know that we can help them keep their lights on. So another role of the EDA, obviously, is to market our town. So whether it's to get people to not just open a business here, to move here, but it's also just for tourism's sake as well. And it gets really important that we spread that message, that, you know, you don't have to pack a lunch to get here, you know, in half an hour, you know, you drive 30 minutes south of the Twin Cities, and you can be enjoying Lake Billsby, you can be kayaking, you can be riding on the trail, you can be going to a game at John Birch Park, as opposed to you go 30 miles, you just get to the cities and you haven't even gotten anywhere yet. So, and I think that this year, we really did experience a lot of people coming out of the cities to spread out a little bit, and they're exploring, they want to do something with their family, and the traffic obviously showed that for the trail, their numbers were up to $150,000, or 150,000 users this year, over 98, I think, the year before. So it's pretty impressive. So hopefully, we'll get those people to return again, either this winter to, you know, use the trail for snowshoeing or cross-country skiing, but hopefully again, we'll see them again this summer. So one of the programs that we also really dove into and launched this year was the Cannon Roots Local Foods Initiative. So this started a few years ago when we realized that there's an event down in Rochester called Feast that features a lot of regional and local producers in the area, like the Iowa, Rochester, Iowa, Minnesota, and Wisconsin areas, and we really had a great representation for Cannon Falls. So with that, when we received the Blandon Grant a few years ago, we used some of those dollars to help create a brand, to help use that as a way to promote and create an initiative around those producers as, you know, kind of one of our feathers in our cap, and a way to really help promote the great things that we have coming out of this community. So I'll just click on these quick, so that we did a two-page advertorial that included, that included the different vendors and producers. You want to sound effects? I can't take credit for that, that just happens. But anyway, so this is the second year that we've done the two-page advertorial, which is, again, it's really impressive that this is coming out of our little town of 4,000 people. So it features the local flavors, but then also the activities with the trail and the river that you can do as well. The Cannon Roots, we did launch a website to help, again, that marketing grant that I got from Smith, I had to create something to drive the traffic, too. So this website features, again, a link to each of the different local producers, whether it's pet food, or it's CBD oil, or it's Ferndale Market. It will go right to their website, it'll go right to their Facebook page, so I don't have to update that content. They are in charge of managing their own content, but at least it's a landing page where people can go and explore and see what there is to enjoy in Cannon Falls. And one really great thing about Cannon Falls, like you can go to Cannon Bell's Cheese for coffee or ice cream and buy some Ferndale sticks, or you can go to Italian Brewery and buy Ferndale sticks, or you can buy the cheese out at Ferndale Market, you know. So I just think that it's really impressive that our businesses are working together, they're not competing with each other, they're not trying to fight each other and be the, you know, better than the other. They're really trying to help this be a cooperative effort. So the other thing is that it also will feature the different adventures and experiences that you can have outside. So I have a content update coming that will include John Birch Park, and it will also include the lake, so that, and then there'll also be a link to where you can rent bikes, or canoes, or kayaks, or whatnot, so that people can see that as well. So the other thing is that we have our own, maybe everyone won't be as excited as I'm about this, but we have our own influencer for Cannon Falls. So we actually have a different person coming every quarter and does three or four different adventures within the community. So what they do is that they come and they say, okay, for half a day, you can, this is what you can do in Cannon Falls in half a day. So, you know, like this particular person made eight stops, they did under 10 miles, you know, whether walking or driving. There's a little bio about the person, and then what they do is that they take the pictures, and then they, you know, upload them to their own Instagram or their own Facebook page or whatever, so that they get that exposure, and then all the businesses are tagged as well. So then we can also then share that, those experiences on our Instagram page or on our Facebook page, and, you know, again, the more people that see it, the better. No one else thinks having an influencer is cool? Okay. So anyway, so then, of course, with the website, we also have social platforms. We've got the Cannon Roots Facebook page, if you don't follow it, please do. We've got an Instagram platform, if you don't follow it, please do. And again, our Sherpa Adventure page. So we have someone coming in the next couple of weeks that is going to be borrowing my snowshoes and going to snowshoe, whether it's out at Hannah's Bend, cross-country ski on the trail, I'm going to get her hooked up with my nephew to give her an ice fishing lesson, and then, anyway, so then she'll blog her experiences and whatnot, and then also, we try to incorporate some businesses, like Altough Hardware, you know, to get her fishing license, or to, you know, see the history in that building, or try to get them to, you know, they spend their own money here, you know, so I mean, like if they go for lunch, or they go for breakfast, they grab a donut, whatever it might be, that's all on their own dime, but it really then kind of helps tie that experience together. We do have an Explore Minnesota advertising ad coming out, like I said, partnered with the Chamber, coming up, and then, again, that digital marketing campaign was what we used the grant dollars for. So just in a snapshot, again, I think this is pretty impressive, that these are brands that are, you know, created right here in Cannon Falls, and, you know, some of them have national attention, some have, definitely have regional attention, but again, I think that's pretty impressive. So we'll continue to promote the Cannon Roots adventure and flavors of the town. So in addition to just the Cannon Roots, obviously, you know, we've got our community television channel, which I think, again, with the pandemic this last year, I don't really know what we would have done without having that and being set up and geared for that. We've been able to stream our council videos. Also, I've been able to get people to tune in to that channel. We've got our social media page for the city, which is a great place to update whether it's this time of year plowing the streets, or it's any COVID-related updates or mandates. And then also, our website, obviously, is where we can funnel people to, for the latest information. So as far as our social media, we do not have an Instagram page at the moment, but as far as our Facebook page, it's not a big surprise, we have more women than men on Facebook, but that, it doesn't matter what business you're in, that's usually the divide is a 25/75 split generally. But again, it's, we have 1,460 followers, which is good, you know, I think that we do have, when we post something, we do get a lot of good activity with it, and not a whole lot of evil comments, you know, and if they are, we can address those, you know, as they come in as well. It's always important to be sure that you respond to any comments, not just let them go, because if you just let it go, then it's, it can sometimes snowball. As far as how the breakdown goes, obviously, Cannon Falls is the largest town, obviously, that's following us, followed by Red Wing, Hastings, Randolph, Minneapolis, Rochester, Northfield, Goodhue, Farmington, and St. Paul. As far as community development goes, like I said, we had the Blandon Broadband Grant that originally started out with $75,000, and it took us a couple of years, maybe two and a half years to spend it, but we did get it all allocated by the end of the year. That was a goal for me, at least, to get that allocated. So with that, just in 2020 alone, we were able to get that Cannon Roots brand launched. We did give $31,792 to our school district, and a lot of those dollars were partnered either with in-kind time donation from staff, or partnered with one-to-one dollars from the Education Foundation, whether it was for devices, or if it was for service. We did identify families that needed service, whether it was due to income or topography, so that those students could learn, especially when we went, we shifted right to that at-home learning. The Cannon Falls Library did receive $1,360 for new Chromebooks. They did FCC uptick in people checking out the hotspots that they had, but also a device itself. Chamber of Commerce, they got a new computer from our program, and then also a new software called Growth Zone, which will allow for them to better manage the content for the members, and then also they're able to accept online payments with that. The Cannavale Senior Center, we did, with the kind donation of a former resident of Cannon Falls, and Randolph, actually, he helped redesign and rebrand the Cannavale, or Cannavale Senior Center. So we did give $1,000 to help offset the cost for that new website and new branding, so that it made it easier for the new director to manage the content, and it also wasn't responsive, it wasn't a responsive design, so if you're on your phone, for instance, you know, you had to use your fingers and try to blow it up to try to read something, or click on something, this made it responsive, so it was much easier to use. And especially when we're thinking about the demographic that would be using it, you wanted to make sure that they can read it on their tablet or on their phone. And then Cannon Bell's Cheese also took advantage of a digital marketing grant, so they chipped in $1,000, Blandon chipped in $2,000, and the EDA chipped in $1,000, so they had $4,000 to do something to help promote their business. So again, they did a web design, and it was perfect timing with the pandemic, so that you could do an online order and accept payments and whatnot. So I mean, it was kind of already in the works, so it was really, like I said, perfect timing with the pandemic. Another project, obviously, was the Cannonball redevelopment. So there was an environmental study done, demolition of the structure, the structure was completed by August, and then that property is currently listed on CoStar and Lois, which Lois is linked with Minnesota Deed, and then CoStar is a commercial industrial property, real estate website. So anyway, so at least we're visible, and I have had some calls from that. And then, like I'd mentioned before, this was the first partnership with Economic Initiative to take care of a big redevelopment project like this, so we hope that, you know, once we get commitment from someone, you know, to redevelop this spot, that maybe they'll want to partner with us in the future on other projects. And then the other thing is that there are electric vehicle charging station, it didn't quite get put in the ground before the ground froze, but that should be on the list for this year. So what are the economic goals for 2021? Annexation has really been one of the things that we've been talking about a lot. You know, we can't, we can't grow if we can't acquire more land, so we're looking at a few different options, whether it's out toward, from the industrial park toward 52, even though that's Dakota County, but that's kind of the area that we're looking at. There's also some county land behind Speedway and Frontier Ag Implement Dealership before you turn to go up to the hospital, and then the Hayes property that would be off of 17, kind of in that Village Viking Avenue area, which is already in the process for being annexed as we speak. Housing, obviously, another big thing that has been on economic development's list for a long time is, you know, we can't grow if we don't have new housing. So if we are able to annex some land, build some houses, whether it's people upgrading their home, will free up some inventory for other residents to maybe purchase their first home, that's what we're hoping for, and then possibly some multifamily housing. Come on. The pursuit of a data center or cold storage. So there is a certification process that's involved in the data center property. They usually want, you know, close to 200 acres or so, and camping in a flood plain and that kind of thing, but based on our position, you know, between the Twin Cities and Rochester, close access to an airport, we look pretty good when it comes into the placement of that. But also, we have to get some cooperation from private landowners that are in that area that own that property, and then keeping the partnership. And then keeping the partnership with Great River Energy and Dakota Electric really open with discussion because they're the ones that feed the, the energy or the industrial park with the energy. And then the McCannan Ball Lot redevelopment, straightening out that easement because it's kind of wonky. Maybe possibly splitting it into two different parcels so that we can, don't just have to focus on one person to develop or one business to develop. Maybe we could do a couple of different things there instead. Because that 3.25, like I said, it's chopped up. And if we can maybe do it into two different parcels, that would give opportunity to a couple of different people. And then updating the Grow Cannon Falls promotional video. Mary Jill, you asked if there's going to be a video? I can make this presentation longer if you want me to show it, but I won't. So there were, there's $45, $4,500 allocated from the Blandon project to update this video. It was done probably in 2017, I believe. So since then, the winery has new owners who is included in this year that's not included in this video. I think it's important to show how our school district pivoted with the at-home learning and where we fall in our, in the state ranking. And then also using our Cannon Roots branding for the Taste and Adventures. So moving on to Planning Commission. The Planning Commission members last year were Mike Daniels, Bruce Hemmer, Glenn Lundell, John Christensen, Derek Lundell, Bill Duncan, Matt Montgomery, and Diane Howard. So there were three variances issued in 2020. One was for a fence. One was to widen their driveway. And then the other one was, this would be for the Banks Outdoors project so that they had a zero lot line, so they could combine that, that area. And it was also rezoned from a District B2 to an I1. There were three CUPs granted. That was for a garage. One was for the Treatment Center that is now in the Saratoga or former Saratoga. And then one was to construct an accessory structure that would bring their combined accessory structure square footage over the maximum city code limits. Of the permits that were pulled, there were 12 homes that were built, single-family homes valuation of 2.8 million. No apartments or multifamily complexes. As far as commercial and industrial, there were six permits issued, valuation of 3.49 million. One of the businesses had to pull two permits for something, so that's why that, those numbers maybe don't jive to. And then other permits, whether it was for decks, garages, renovations, remodel, whatnot, there were 139 of those. So total, there were 157 permits issued, valuation of 8.3 million. That's it. That's the show. So any questions from anyone that I can answer or?
Can you repeat the first part?
Yes, let me back up, sir.
Laura, are you actively marketing the Lee Chevrolet property? Is there any interest?
At this point, I mean, I did, I did walk a gentleman down there earlier this summer that was, he, he actually came to meet about the Cannon Ball property. And while we were downtown, we just kind of took a little, you know, walk around the area. And I showed him that, but for what his plan was, it, you know, he was kind of thinking housing apartment complex or something, and it's just too small. I mean, you'd have to go up and then you block the view of the river. So it's, you know, like I said, I mean, it's half an acre. So I mean, really, and I think that, you know, having some kind of retail or some kind of little thing there, I think, would be better, especially with all the, you know, the, the traffic that that area generates. I think that it'd be really great to have some walking traffic there. Anyway, but otherwise, right now, I think having the lot full with parking, I know that doesn't help increase our market value, but you know, it's nice to see that there's cars there that are spending money in our town.
Correct.
Yeah. So any other questions at all? No? Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent report.
Thank you.
Okay. Leads us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion or resolution is council business. For you at home and in the audience, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A, just and correct claims for the accounting period ending December 31, 2020. Item B, just and correct claims for the accounting period ending February 12, 2021. Item C, the minute meetings for the February 2, 2021 City Council meeting. Item D, approve a public works director position. Item E, approve a pool manager, manager hire. Item F, approve a police officer hire. Item G, approve the 2021 contracted police services rate. Item H, approve a regional grant, a regional trail grant application. Item I, approve the John Birch Park retaining wall proposal. And item J, approve the update to the city COVID-19 plan. Is there anything the council would like to pull down?
I'd like to pull down item G.
Item G, okay. We're going to put that under council business. C, approving the 2021 contracted police services rate. Is there anything else?
I'd like to pull down item J.
Okay, we'll put that under council business as item D. Approve an update to the city COVID-19 plan. Anything else? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item G and item J?
I'll move to approve.
Second. A motion and second, meeting and seconded to approve the consent agenda minus items G and J. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Before we get into council business, I'm going to introduce our new public works director. He's in the audience, Danny Howard. If you'd stand up, that's our, that's your hire tonight, your new public works director. Welcome.
Thank you.
Are you a flight risk?
No. Excuse me, John, just to mention that Dan would be starting, I think, March 8, I believe.
March 8, okay. Sounds good.
Flight risk.
Watch that guy. Okay, let's get into council business. Item A, sack and whack fee reduction discussion. Neil.
The Public Works, I better get this on. The Public Works Commission discussed the whack and sack reduction fees at their last meeting. Let's just back up a little bit. We've had several commercial industrial buildings built in the last several years that has come to the city council and, and requested reductions in the, in the sack and whack fees, simply because they feel that they're, they're too large. Sack and whack can be as much as $30,000 for each, for each one of them. So you could have a $60,000 sack and whack fee if you're going to build a six-inch water line and a, and a 10-inch sewer going into your facility. Every time that the council has taken this under consideration, they have reduced the sack and whack down to the minimum rate of 5,600 for each the water and sewer. I remember a few meetings back, Derek said, why aren't we looking at this? And, and so, and I, I actually agree with them that, you know, $5,600 is plenty for what, what the city should be charging for water access and sewer access fees. They took it under consideration at their last meeting and, and voted unanimously to bring this to city council to have, instead of a three-tier sack and whack fee, just to bring it to one standard fee for each at the minimum rate of $5,600 per. This will help staff when they come in and say, no, this is our fee. This is what you will pay and there's no more negotiating because this is the minimum that we can charge or we will charge. What I want from you tonight is, is the Public Works Commission did approve this to bring it here, but I want to, before I have our city attorney look at it and see if we, what kind of route we have to do to change the, the fees. Is it by ordinance? Is it by public hearings? Do we have to, et cetera, et cetera? I don't want to spend a lot of money if I don't have the consensus of, of the council to bring this down from a, a high of, of over $60,000, $60,020 down to, you know, $5,600 a piece. So if you feel that this would be appropriate, I'd like to carry that forward to the city attorney and, and have her start working on that a little bit and, and see where, where we got to go with it.
Well, it seems like we're ending up there anyway and, and why waste our time to negotiate it down for them to come in? We'll just right up front say, this is what they are and, and we're sticking to it. You don't have to monkey around all the time with different companies coming in and they say, well, you did it for this person, we want it too. And I think we just, we just had, you know, so.
Yeah. I think that's, I think that's reasonable. And also Derek, Neil mentioned at the meeting that part of the reason, it isn't just because Cannon Falls is trying to charge a bunch, it's when this started, we had a lot more debt and a lot more payments. And isn't there kind of a formula that they go by or something?
Well, the PFA, when they borrow you money for the wastewater treatment plant, which is 19 years ago, because we have one payment left, which is going to be a, a good day for Cannon Falls. That million dollar payment will go away, almost a million dollars. You have to prove that you can make that payment. And I think back in that time period, back 20 years ago approximately, that was one of the things they put together as trying to make that payment.
Right.
With one payment left, I don't think it's quite as important now to make that payment.
Right.
And so I feel since we've been for the last several requests, reducing it anyhow, it's probably just time to, to set it at the minimum and, and move forward. So when, when this stuff comes to staff, we can say, this is it. This is what we're going to put on your building permit and we're going to move forward. Instead of having to bring it to the Public Works Commission and then the Public Works Commission makes a recommendation, comes to city council and, and three steps later you do it anyhow. So, but that's the reasoning I, I believe back 20 years ago when, when this was done.
Is there anybody that is against that consensus to go move it to the city attorney? Anybody opposed to that?
No, we should do it.
Okay, I guess go ahead then. Don't think we need a motion, just go ahead and do it.
Just consensus though, right?
Okay. Item B, approve a tax increment financing services. Laura?
Again, yes. So Volumetrics is a new building that is going to be. Oh. Working? No? Sorry. Volumetrics and Cannon Bell's new facility that is going up in the industrial park, since they are right next to each other. Neil had suggested doing a tax increment financing district across the two parties. Neither of them have pulled or paid for their building permits yet, so it gave us an opportunity to, we've basically given that land away, you know, for a dollar for each parcel. So doing a tax increment financing district would help us recoup some of those costs in the future. And I believe, I'm just trying to find it here. Again, technology's not my friend. So the, the cash flow and estimate, again, don't keep these as hard numbers, but it'll be about $393,000 in total tax increment that would be coming back to Cannon Falls over that time. And over, is it nine? It's nine years, Neil, correct? But anyway, it's, it, like I said, it's an opportunity to do this so that we can help get some of our dollars back over that time so that we can use it to reinvest and purchase some more real estate so we can keep expanding. So my request to the council is to approve the proposal with Ailer's Public Financial Advisors to authorize the execution of the contract that was in your packet.
Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second that.
Motion by, gives me a second by Duncan to approve the tax increment financing services agreement with Ailer's. Is that well, how it goes? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, item C is approving the 2021 contracted police services rate. Mary Jill, you pulled that one down.
My turn. I've been thinking a lot about how I was going to approach this because it really isn't the contracted police service rate that I have necessarily a problem with. It's the arrangement altogether. I think that it's been explained and, and all that to me. I just think that an arrangement like this unnecessarily blurs the line between the city and a private business. I don't see why we would do it. I mean, I really don't. I mean, I probably sound like Denzel Washington in the, in the movie Philadelphia, but explain it to me like I'm in third grade, why we would want to do this. It seems, it, and I've been trying to think of an analogy, why I think it's such a bad idea, because I have always thought it was a bad idea. And it came to me the other day as the snowplows came past my house. And I thought, you know, wouldn't that be great if the snowplow just take a swipe in my driveway? It'd be so great. We wouldn't have to shovel. But that's not what our public works department does. It plows the streets. It plows the city parking lots. If we want to have a real problem, we'll have Dan and his crew slap on signs that say Cannon Falls Snow Removal and then start charging people to plow their driveways or to plow parking lots. And it's just not done that way. I know that there is an indemnification agreement where the, I suppose the winery holds us harmless. Well, anybody who knows about indemnification agreements knows, first of all, they are not made out unless they're unequal parties. You do not have two equal people holding each other harmless. The reason for that indemnification is so that purportedly the winery wouldn't be able to come after the city of Cannon Falls if something goes wrong. And, you know, you may as well just hold up a big sign saying, we're responsible, we know we are, and so we're asking for this from someone who doesn't have the ability to really give it. Because once you get to a point in a situation that an indemnification agreement even comes into conversation, it's way beyond that. There are lawyers and insurance companies deciding what happens. That agreement isn't worth the ink that, that went in to print it. And maybe it's, again, maybe it's kind of my background in insurance. We just are putting ourselves at too much risk in my, in my view to do this. So I oppose this, but I'm probably in the minority, but I do oppose it. So that's my take.
Can I ask a question? This, what's proposed tonight in the agenda is just the approval of the rate, correct? We're not approving the, the whole contracted services thing, are we?
This would just be a continuation. As was just discussed in the police commission, we didn't have any requests because of COVID, so we can't tell you how many times we were requested. All I can tell you is that we did have All I can tell you is that we did have a request this year, prior to this coming to the Police Commission, and they wanted twenty-four hour for two weeks. And because of our staffing, there's just no way we could have done that. So if they requested us tomorrow for eight hours for one weekend day, that might be something that could be filled. I just don't know at this point.
I'm just not clear on, we just, we were just approving the rate continuing the, of the agreement that we had already drawn up, correct?
Yes, this would be just a continuation of that.
So we're not voting on whether we should continue this or not continue it at all? Are we discussing that tonight?
Uh, I, I think.
That was my understanding, is that this was setting the rate to continue at four twenty twenty-one because we did have nothing to go on from COVID.
But not to actually change whether we should have it.
I actually interpret the last sentence of the first paragraph, the city council asked that the matter be reviewed after a year. I, I consider that to be the entire agreement, but maybe I'm wrong.
No, and that, and that's how I also read it. And the other thing Mary Jill didn't mention is, uh, the, one of the big things here is, is workman's comp. And as the, most of the, Laura probably doesn't know this, but the rest of the councils are aware that we've had that situation that's costing us a lot of money for many years to come. So why are we?
Based on the situation?
No, no.
It, it doesn't matter, workman's comp is.
Well, I think it does matter. It was not, it was not a contracted services injury, no.
No, it was not.
No, it was not.
But that's not the point. Why are we taking the additional chance? Why, what is in this for the city? Only bad things can happen to the city because of this. There's nothing that we gain. Mary Jill set out the perfect example of, you know, it'd be like our Public Works guys going, eh, you know, on the side, well, you know, we'll wear our Cannon Falls shirt and come plow your driveway, you know, for however many dollars. We did discuss this last year and it was, it was not unanimous. I, I think this is just a bad thing for the city to be doing. And, and she touched upon the indemnity. Well, at the end of the day, as she discussed, what happens is that they'll come after the city because we have the deep pockets. There's nothing to be gained here and I'm, I'm strongly against this.
The other thing too, Bill, is, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve, go ahead.
Well, I think everything, Bill, you said is nothing to, we, we hashed this, we rehashed this, and I think we've, we're covering all our bases. And if the cops want to work a little extra somewhere else, that's fine. Anybody can have a part-time job, I don't know why we're all telling them they can't.
I think the important thing to remember is this is not like Public Works. At the end of the day, whether it's the winery, one of our churches, one of our industrial businesses that wants to hire an officer, they're hiring because they have a concern. If something happens, having an officer there is an advantage to the city and to the business. The reason it's an advantage to the city is that an officer's there and hopefully a situation can be intervened on and prevented from escalating. Unlike Public Works, who may or may not fill your driveway with snow, we're not coming out as Public Works and guys to dig it out. But the police department shows up at those events that get out of control, that's who they call, is us. So I think there is an advantage to having an officer there that maybe try to de-escalate it and keep it from going out of control. And even if it does go out of control, having an officer there gives us as a department an advantage because now instead of one officer maybe dealing with it, you definitely would have two. But that decision is up to you guys.
Bill's got a, Bill's got a point on the workman's comp, but I guess I feel if, if a policeman wants to take and make some extra money, that's fine.
And that's why we're covering our, all of our costs for work comp.
Where I got a problem is out of town. Why, why would we consider, you know, using our police down at Treasure Island or something? If there's any compromise.
Yep, that's not part of this, that would be if they wanted to make a request in the future.
Well.
That policy was designed to cover any request that could come to us from another governmental agency. For example, Minneapolis is going to be having a trial going on. They're signing agreements with other agencies to send bodies and covering those costs. We're not able to participate in that because of our staffing. But there, you know, those are, what this policy, that clause within it, was designed to address as well. And those would have to come before this body to be considered on an individual basis.
Okay.
I guess if there's a compromise and you want to limit duties within the city, I'd be all right with it, but not anything outside.
And that's what this policy essentially does, is the, the duties within the city, there is that clause that other ones could be considered, but they would have to come before council before the agreements could be signed.
Yeah.
I'd rather see that as just an exception that isn't even addressed, but that's, you know, we can always bring an exception forward if we want to, but I guess that's not my call.
I'll make a motion to approve item C.
Second.
Motion is made in second to approve item C, which is the two thousand twenty-one contracted police services rate. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Yeah, hang on.
No.
Duncan?
No.
Gesmi?
Aye.
Cronenberger?
Aye.
Lundell?
Aye.
Montgomery?
Aye.
It's passed four to two. Okay, item D is approve a update to the city COVID-nineteen plan. Matt?
Yeah, um, it's just little stuff to this one. In the appendix F, if we go to page three, talking about employee and their elected activities and things, if we go down to the paragraph, second paragraph underneath the bullet points, the last sentence, failing to follow the provisions of employee elected activities outlined above may result in discipline of the employee. I'm just wondering, what's the detail and who would decide the discipline? And is there, is there a ladder? Do we have a, a set? Would it be a?
Progressive discipline, you mean?
Right, like a written name and a file and all that stuff? Because like we said, I mean, this is about the safety of the city, but at the same time, social gatherings, weddings, funerals, things like that, if a city employee were to, to go to something like that, obviously we want the, the CDC guidelines and everything to be followed as best as they can. But if somebody were to get caught.
Without a face mask at a wedding and there's a picture up there.
Correct, correct, that's exactly. So when we say discipline, I think for the well-being of all the city employees in every department, it'd be helpful if we had an idea of what that discipline actually means.
Good point.
I think the discipline varies amongst who the union is, because we have to follow whatever that is.
So if it was following union guidelines, do you have a ballpark of what those would be?
Or if it's a non-union, it's personnel policy. Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
Yep. That's all, I, I mean, I'm not necessarily asking for a change, I just wanted to bring that up just to see if this is, you know, is this something that would have teeth where it comes before the council and we have to have a closed meeting? Or is this something where they just talk to their department head and say, hey, you know, please follow CDC guidelines and get a written, something written?
It's a good question, actually. Yeah, because.
You know, this isn't something to have the employees.
Disciplined. It's follow, follow the guidelines till we're out of this thing.
Absolutely.
And if, if you end up on Facebook and, in a three hundred person, whatever, whatever, you know, the employee maybe should be talked to and said, you know what, the safety of my whole staff depends on what you're doing. So I think that would be the first route. It's not intended to get people in, in severe trouble, but you know what, if our whole Public Works Commission, or Public Works Department comes down with COVID and we get ten inches of snow, we got problems.
Yeah, 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 I get that. I just thought, I, I thought, um, this is really well-written, it's got a lot of examples, but when it talks about discipline without giving the example, I just wanted to clarify to see what that meant. And the word expectation versus recommend, I don't know if it matters much, but if we could change where we have the word expectation versus recommend, it's just like, you know, the words matter, may versus shall. If, if we put recommend instead of expect, because expect feels like it's got a little bit of a, a gotcha tag to it. Like we said, Mary Jill's example was, was perfect of somebody goes to a wedding and their mask is off and they're too close to somebody and then somebody is to bring that forward and say, oh, look at this person. Whereas if we say recommend, I mean, obviously we hope that all of our employees are following the CDC guidelines to the best of their ability, with the well-being of themselves and with everybody else in mind. But if we say recommend instead of expect, I think that changes the, the tone.
So you're saying in the area where it says the city has an expectation?
Yes, and there's another line that, uh.
Yeah, there's a couple of them.
There's a couple of expectation, if we would change that to recommend or recommendation, I think that would, like I said, change the tone so that it doesn't feel quite so.
Job-related?
Yeah.
Like a tick on the job thing? Yeah, I know what you mean.
Yeah.
Oh.
But if you change it to recommend, then you can't do discipline, can you? I mean, I can ask you to do something, but if you don't do it, you just recommended it.
Yeah, well, but if your boss recommends you to do something and you don't, could you still get disciplined? That's a, that's.
Yeah, if it's part of your job, you know, then it's, becomes sort of a gray area. I can see both ways, but.
Right, that's why, again, I'm not trying to split hairs, it's just the tone of, you know, having the backs of our, all the, the staff for the city so that there isn't, I, I want to make it feel like it's less of a gotcha and more like there's a understanding there that, you know, follow to the best of your abilities, but give them a little bit more wiggle room so that it doesn't, because expectation feels more black and white and recommended seems like there's a little, like, you know, being at the school every day, there's recommendations of being six feet apart, but every once in a while, people get close to each other. That's just, so, I, I just think it's the tone of recommendation versus expectation.
I wouldn't expect to get disciplined if it was a recommendation, that's just my opinion.
Neal, would that be an issue? If it was a recommendation and they didn't follow it and they brought it back here?
You know, I'm not going to pull the wool so they can say this is, but what we're trying to do here is provide a, a safe workplace for our people. And whether it's recommend or expects.
Whether it's recommends or expects, I think the, the goal is providing a safe workplace. So whatever you choose is fine. I don't, I don't anticipate that we're going to have too much problem.
Yeah, I, I would agree. And Jeff, you wrote this, correct?
Yes.
Does that matter, the expectation versus recommendation? Is that, do you feel?
Well, I think that the expectation, as an employer, we're saying, what we expect is you to behave in a manner that doesn't bring back and put other employees at risk.
Absolutely.
And a recommendation would be, well, we recommend you don't put other people at risk, but it's really your choice. As an employer the size of Minneapolis, hey, we could lose two hundred people and probably not worry about it. It's Cannon Falls, if we lost three people in Public Works and it snowed two feet, we'd notice it.
Okay.
But, you know, the, the, the choice of the words really comes down to this body, because you're going to be, you know, we've, we've brought this before you because it has that component that an employee could choose not to follow anything, say, I'm just going to go out and I'm going to come back to work and I don't care.
Sure.
And that person isn't going to care whether the word's expectation or a recommendation.
As an employer, if, if you suddenly had one employee who came back, didn't tell anybody, and then turned out to be the source for infecting six of your other staff, would you be irritated?
Yeah, sure, but would the difference between recommendation and expectation and the level of discipline change in this situation?
No, I don't think so.
I don't know if it would.
Right.
You know, would, I guess it would depend, and that would really.
It really depends on.
As an employer, I'd rather have the word expectation in there.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I, I would too.
But I can see, I can see what you're getting at, but it's still a kind of, there's still some wishy-washy in there too. But I can see what you're at, saying.
Regardless, I, obviously I'm in favor of this. It's, it's a common sense, following CDC guidelines, it's just, I wouldn't want our, anybody on the city employees to feel caught up in that, that gotcha game mentality, which I, I don't think that necessarily is, I'm just, if there's a tone change, but if the council doesn't see that, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, I respect it.
You want a motion to approve it?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mary Jill. Any other discussion?
The only thing I want to make sure I clarify is, is it with as written or did you want the changes?
I, as written is just fine. We, we had a discussion and it, it didn't need changing.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, reports. Kyle's not here from the chamber tonight. EDA, Laura, anything else you'd like to report on that?
I think you've heard enough of me.
It's so great.
Okay, Public Works, Derek?
Yeah, we met a couple of weeks ago. One of the things we talked about was the water and sewer access fees, which we changed. We talked about, so the Colville Street Water Main, we all know the issues up there with the rusty water. It sounds like we are gonna hopefully get a proposal and get it done this year, or this spring, summer, whenever we can get it done. So that's good. Neil went over all the two thousand twenty-one projects that are coming up. I can't remember them all. Neil, if you want to.
Go ahead.
We also talked about the curb stop policy, and we decided that we would just leave it the way it is for now, since there's not really any good reason to change it. And we briefly went over the Highway nineteen Mill and Overlay project that Mendot's going to be doing, I think, this year, right?
Right, yeah, they're.
Neil kind of showed us some maps.
They're going to bid it out in December for a twenty twenty-two.
Oh, twenty twenty-two, okay.
Oh, okay, all right.
Good. Yeah, Neil just showed us some maps of kind of what they're going to be looking at and, anything else?
We talked just briefly about the river that runs behind my house.
Oh.
I don't know if you've got an actual update on that situation up by Grove Street?
That's going to be a, a challenge at best. One of the things that we are working with is the developer on top of the hill to bring that pond into his development, but that's not going to be anytime soon. That's the only way we're going to be able to get the water out without going across other people's property and, and, and making it so it can get to either a stormwater system or the river. That's the problem. We can push it off a cliff without any houses, but now you're dumping it on a farm field and they're not going to like that either, because you diverted water. So it is going to be a challenge, but the Jabulansky Development, he did say that he would help us and participate with us, because he's going to need stormwater ponds up in his development also when he gets there. So working together, we'll probably get it figured out eventually, but it's, it's going to be a struggle.
An easy one.
Well, just to avoid confusion about that curb stop in Maine, we left the policy as is, so the homeowner, it's from the house to the main yet. So we left it as is.
Right.
Anything else in Public Works?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, Park Board, Matt?
Uh, most of our issues were in consent agenda tonight, the approval of hiring a manager for the pool, and also the, looking further into John Birch Park and what we can do for the, the rock wall. That was a, a big part of our discussion and the approval, so that we can have our engineers take a look at what they're dealing with.
Okay, Police Commission, Jeff?
Sure. So the Police Commission has met a couple of times since we last updated you. They met February eighth.
Police Commission has met a couple of times since we last updated you. They met February eighth. At that one, they discussed the contracted police services rate, which you guys have already dealt with. Police officer hiring, they recommended bringing to the council one of the candidates for approval of final offer, which you guys have already dealt with. They also were waiting for completion of backgrounds on a couple of candidates so that they could get to the point of.
they could get to the point of deciding where they wanted to go for conditional offer. We had a discussion on a couple of other items that were tabled, city affairs policy and speed sign, display speed signs. And then the Police Commission met this evening, prior to the council meeting, and focused just on police officer hiring. And so they were updated that the final offer was on the agenda for tonight, that the background was completed on one of the two candidates, the other one, we're still waiting for results on. Council recommend, or Commission, excuse me, recommended moving forward with a conditional offer on the candidate with the background complete. We still anticipate another opening, and so they're going to move forward, continuing the background on the other candidate, and then they're going to work with, have me work with HR, and take a look at some of the people who applied that we did not interview, and try to find a couple more people to bring into the pool, so that if this anticipated opening occurs, while they still have one candidate, they just want us to know that there isn't somebody else that they want to move forward with and bring in forward a recommendation to you. So I'll be working with HR and then with the Police Commission on that.
Okay, thank you. Library Board, Mary Jill, got anything there?
No, nothing much.
Finance Committee, Bill?
Yeah, we had at our meeting, okay, we had at our meeting two items that we took care of tonight, the updating the city COVID plan and the Tiff District, which we're moving forward with. The other thing I wanted to, to bring up, if you recall, in 2019, we approved a fee schedule with the school regarding John Birch lights, et cetera, but one of the things in there that we didn't follow through on, where we were supposed to, was meet in like the first quarter of 2020, and because switch in city administrators, pandemic, et cetera, we did not do that, so I've asked Neil to try and set something up with the school, have the Finance Committee and whoever's representing the school, and we can get together and discuss any updates on, on fees, and, and I think the school has a subject they want to talk to us about, too, so Neil, you'll be able to move forward on trying to set something up somewhere down in the next few weeks. Okay.
Yeah, we didn't get it done this last quarter because of the pandemic, and in that time, you know, there wasn't anything really going on, the baseball team was shut down completely. It wasn't the end of the world that we didn't get together with them, but it was, it was discussed that in early 2020, we should get together and, and relook at the fees and any other concerns with John Birch Park or whatever else that the school happens to have for us.
Right, and that's...
But we'll do that.
Because all of us, other than Laura, were here for that, so that's, that's it, so we'll, we'll get that ball rolling.
Okay. Okay, let's see what we got. We got Nicole, we got you there tonight, Nicole?
There she is. I hate that background.
It's not Minnesota, and it's not cold, so I put that up. So I, I'll just give you an update about what's going on at the library. So on Thursday, Alexa will be handing out science kits for kids again, so you can pick them up at the library at any point on Thursday. And on Friday, there's a teen advisory board meeting at 2:00 PM, and Matthew's leading that, so if any of you know of any teens that want to participate, have them email Matthew or call the library, and he'll set up, he'll send out the Zoom invite. And this weekend, Saturday and Sunday at 10:00 AM, there is ACT practice. So anybody who's planning to practice, to take the ACT, you can get some free practicing, taking the, the practice exam before you actually take the exam. And Matthew's got that covered, he's been doing it for a few years, it's great service for kids planning to go to college. We also, on Tuesday at 2:00 PM, have the anti-racism workshop again, which is Zoom. If you would like to attend, contact Matthew at the library. On Wednesday, the 24th, we have a seek and find on Facebook, so there's, all you have to do is look for the post on our Facebook page. The 25th on Thursday is a craft afternoon for kids, so again, you can pick up crafts that you can take home and work on. The Friday, the 26th, is going to be a fun one, that's Legends and Folklores of Winter. Chad Lewis is going to be making a Zoom presentation, he's an author, and he's also a really cool speaker. He's going to be talking about bizarre tales and stories of superstitions from, you know, this time of year and this part of the country. So, you know, he's a really good speaker, so please zoom in and participate in that. And we have a young reader book club on Saturday, the 27th, at 2:00 PM. The February's book is The Ugly Vegetables by Grace Lynn, so any younger readers can participate in that. And also, wait, yes, the 22nd, we have book club. I do not remember the title of that book club, and Cindy's running that one. And that's everything that we've got, oh, 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 sorry, on the 28th, at 2:00 PM, we have a bingo night on Zoom going on. That's everything that's happening at the library.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. Let's see, Staff, Laura, you got anything else? Jeff? Neil?
Couple things, I just wanted to touch base with the retaining wall on John Birch Park, thank you for approving that. I think we're going to have to get together with Keith and Bucky and, and the Park Board and get what type of wall we're looking at. So when the study comes back and we've got the wrong kind of wall that we got a cost on, that doesn't make any sense to me. So I think prior to the study being taken and moving forward, I think we got some work to do to say, I like that wall, not so much with that one. So I think I did send a couple of examples off to Keith Myers today, and he's passed it around to that group. I'll send the Park Board the same email, or I'll have Alan do it in the morning, so you guys can get a kind of a look at some of the walls that, that we're proposing. That way, we're, we're all on the same page, we don't have to do this twice, and it should save some money. One of the examples, if you go down to Rochester on Highway 52 and right by the St. Mary's turnoff there, you'll see that wall.
Yeah.
That's kind of the wall that we're talking. And then there's some other wall that we, down in Dubuque, Iowa, that WHK does work in, they sent an example, so you'll be able to see that. And if that's the kind that the Park Board and these, and the other group is looking at, I think we can move forward and lessen the time spent on this, so.
This might be a naive question, but this, is this reusing the limestone that's there, or is this building a brand-new wall?
This is building a new wall.
That's what I thought.
If there's going to be any salvage to that limestone rock that's there, it may have to be used for decoration purposes, not structural.
Right.
It's, it's too...
Pretty soft.
It's too soft, yeah.
Neil showed me a couple of potential pictures that look kind of interesting.
Yeah. And the second item, I want to welcome Dan to the City Cannon Falls, I look forward to working with you.
Mary Jill, don't you want to...
I promise I will not say it. The last person we had, I said, hey, he came back after the first day, and then he quit the next day, so I'm not saying a thing. Not saying a thing.
A little odd. Okay, let's go around the horn. Laura, do you have anything for us? Mary Jill?
The only thing I would say is that it's sure been cold at my house, cold enough so that a fellow council member had to come give my kid a jump, well, guess who that was? And so it just reminds me of, oh my gosh, take care of people, take care of your animals, and huge shout-out to all of our first responders, including this man right back here, the police, even the Public Works in times like this, you come out and deal with stuff in pretty bad conditions, so I'm grateful for all of your efforts, and that's, that's all I've got.
Okay, Matt?
Nothing big, just obviously, COVID, things are changing, situations are changing, the school calendar, the governor's orders, everything could be changing a little bit, so just keep reminding people, be vigilant, keep the mask on, try to be safe, think of others, that's it.
Bill?
Just that I was the council member that Mary Jill mentioned to call and get my kid's car started, otherwise, that's it.
Steve?
I want to say, welcome, Mr. Howard, to the, and piggyback on what Mary Jill said, you got big shoes to fill, the last guy was here on Sunday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
So we'll not just... I'll just...
Just a couple other things, kudos to the Fire Department, Mary Jill said a little bit about them, but boy, gosh, you know, they were out there the other day and...
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, they had a, they had a rough weekend.
I had a fill for them. Social media, there's been some stuff on social media about water issues. If you have rusty water, please call Ellen, she's sitting there waiting for you to call her at 263-9300. Also, DMV, people are complaining that they can't get through to the DMV there again, and Ellen put this right on there, call her, she'll make sure that you get through somehow. I gotta remember to unhook my phone tonight when I get home.
She can send an email after my tour.
Also, thanks to the city, I got to spend over five glorious hours with the League of Minnesota Cities on some webinars, questions and answers, and roundtable discussions, and I really found out what you guys are all doing wrong.
A lot of...
No. Lot, lot of good discussion, a lot of discussion with affordable housing, and maybe what we can do to help land-wise, and I'll talk to Neil about that a little bit more, but I just, it was a, it was a good opportunity and, and time well-spent at my kitchen table on the computer, but that's all I got.
Okay. Derek?
I can't follow that, nothing for me.
Well, I just wanted to mention, too, the Fire Department, it was a, it was a wicked weekend out there with their trucks freezing up and everything else, and a couple bad fires. And again, welcome, Dan, looking forward to working with you, and it'll, it'll, it'll be great, so. One upcoming meeting I'll mention is Joint Powers Board is Tuesday, February 23rd, that's the only one before we have a council meeting again, so the only one I'm going to mention tonight. So with that, I'm going to open the public input. Actually, there's no, well, let's see, I'll go through. Citizen may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. Public comments must be respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the data privacy rules. City council will not take any action on the issues raised by the public, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Is there anybody here for public input? Second call. Third and final call, public input. Hearing none, I'll close the public input portion of the meeting, and with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Motion by Duncan, second by Montgomery, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.